The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education.
Start this meeting of the New Britain Board of Education at 6:17. And let's start with a pledge of allegiance. Mr. Kane, could you give us your proof?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll look. Rule?
Mr. Merrill Gay.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane, with a C.
Here.
Ms. Monica Dawkins.
Here.
Mr. Anthony Kane.
Here.
Mr. Joseph Listrow.
Here.
Mr. Matthew Moreno.
Here.
Ms. Annie Parker.
Here.
Ms. Diana Reyes.
Here.
Ms. Gail Sanders Conley.
Here.
Ms. Tina Santana.
Here.
Okay, and let's start with a moment of meditation. Okay, and do we have anybody for public participation?
I don't see any call-ins either.
Okay, no call-ins, nobody here. So our first item of business is the election of officers. Since this is the first meeting after the election, so I will, we will do election of president, then vice president, then secretary. So let me start by asking if there are nominations for the position of president. Mr. Kane?
I would like to place my little brother, name of my little brother into nomination, Tony Kane. He's got a lot of long-term experience on board, but also a retributive collaborator and extreme knowledge of education and district operations.
I nominate Gail Sanders Conley. And because of her experience and dedication, I think she'll do a good job.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. And does anybody want to do this by, do this publicly or do you want to do a written vote?
Public.
That would be fine.
All right, so all votes in favor of Tony Kane?
Can I vote?
Yes, of course you can vote yourself. Okay, that's four votes, all votes for Gail Sanders. Six votes, okay. You were all right. There we go. Congratulations.
No, we don't have a switch, I'll stay right here. Oh, I get the camel though.
Shit, I ain't shaking.
I got the camel.
Madam President, may we recognize and publicly congratulate you, pledge that we will work together.
Thank you, Mr. Kane, I appreciate that, I really do. Thank you. Next order of business, vice president. Are there any nominations for vice president? Ms. Ryan.
I'd like to nominate Merrill Gay for vice president.
Are there any other nominations? It's all in favor of Mr. Merrill Gay as vice president. Next up, secretary. Is there any nominations for secretary?
I'd like to nominate Tony Kane.
Is there any, is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Diana Reyes.
Okay, so all in favor of Tony Kane TC for secretary. And then for Ms. Diana Reyes. I know. I knew that was gonna happen, all right, so we knew that was gonna happen, so. One more time, do we have any, can we all vote for Mr. Anthony Kane with a C? I know. Ms. Diana Reyes. One more time. I know. But then we don't have a secretary though, I think that's the...
Yeah, we put to the next, move to the next month and revisit it all.
Okay. Okay, one more time, any votes for Mr. Anthony Kane with a C?
This is better than going to the gym.
Right? We just got a...
I'm just saying, right, Anthony ate our lunches.
And then Ms. Diana Reyes. So we are at a tie. Our bylaws state that we need, do need to postpone to the next meeting. So committee chairs, because we do not have a secretary. So policy, Mr. Merrill Gay. Curriculum, Mr. Anthony Kane with a K. Okay. Personnel, Ms. Parker. Finance, facilities and transportation. Not that I'm a control freak, I just would like to pass it on to either Mr. Moreno or Mr. Kane within a couple of months, so I'm gonna still chair it just for a little while. We do have health, it's not health, it's wellness. So Mr. Listrow. And then if you guys want to email me which committees you would like to be a part of, I think I know which ones you want to be a part of, but I want to make sure that I take in your, what you would like, your preferences. Policy and curriculum are one night, facilities, transportation and personnel are another night, and then wellness is typically during, during the day. So I figured Mr. Moreno might be right up your alley for...
Madam President, when will we be signing on liaison schools?
So that's a good point. We do have it in our bylaws, I figured I would have you guys send me which schools you would like to be a liaison to, and then we'll put them out there. Because our bylaws do state that. So if you send me an email for your committee, and then which schools you would like to be a liaison to. But feel free, you can go to any PTO meeting, any meeting, any event, anytime, anyplace. Like Tina and I, I just go to the Brim High because it is what it is. The more they see our faces, the better off we are. Okay. So dum, dun, and dun. Next order of business is a superintendent's report. Do we have toys? We do. So tonight's superintendent's report is a hands-on activity, 10 minutes, and probably a lot more fun than me reading it for you. So Jen, if you want to introduce yourself and one of our teachers.
Hi, my name's Jen Wright. I am assistant coordinator of STEAM and summer learning. I had the pleasure of meeting many of you at the curriculum subcommittee meeting. And I'd like to introduce Ms. Brianna DiLassio. She is a STEAM teacher at Smith School. And we're gonna talk to you today a little bit, we're gonna talk to you a little bit, and then we're gonna play a little bit. And by the way, say play, or mean we're gonna work, okay? So we're gonna Google, it's the best way. So we're gonna talk to you about an initiative that we are so proud of, and I'm just gonna jump right in. So we are, we are growing. We are growing our robotics program, our K-8 robotics program in an effort to support our academies at the high school. So this, this means that we need to build up our skills for our students. Slowly. But we are, we're starting at the kindergarten level, and really, we'd like to really even back that up into the pre-K level eventually. So one of the, one of the things we're gonna talk to you about today is sitting right in front of you. It's called a V-Box. And a V-Box is almost basic of robots. It's so fun to come up with.
No, Matt's not here.
We're just not gonna be in present, oh, sorry.
That's okay.
So we're gonna talk to you about starting with our V-Box and moving to our Lego Mindstorms and even beyond that. All right, can we take it away?
So we took the opportunity to engage our students in a hands-on learning experience that relates to an everyday scenario, and it just so happened to be, in this case, related to the Thanksgiving Day Parade. So we chose to incorporate this challenge, which was the balloons over Broadway challenge, based on a notable story as well. We started by describing to students how each portion of STEAM was incorporated into this activity, and how they would be applying their knowledge of the engineering design process along with their knowledge of coding. For the very first time, we combined those two activities as one. So engineering a balloon, which I brought some examples to show you. Please do, keep in mind, these are about two weeks old at this point, so they've been around the block a little bit, but, and also...
Do the kids make them? Give me a nice job.
They did, indeed. So those two activities are incorporated into one final challenge project that they were going to do. So we use, we use literacy as a springboard, but you're also gonna see how math and engineering were incorporated as well. Now this activity, I know these robots look pretty primary, and they certainly are, but we decided, this was a really high-leverage activity, we're gonna start with our fifth graders, we're gonna have them model for our youngest students. So you'll be able to see some evidence of that. Now, if you look at our standards, and you read those standards, you might think, holy moly, and that's, you should think that, these are K-12 standards. This is what they look like on paper, these are the IST standards, these are the two that we focused on, and I'm gonna show you what they look like at the fifth grade level. So here we have our learning targets, and we have the success criteria. This is what we told students, this is how they, this is how they were going to know they were successful. Build a balloon, they were gonna code, tell their partner about it, and then it was gonna be part of the parade. Here are some of those little examples. You see some of those live in person, we had Kermit, we had the traditional Thanksgiving turkey, and some other characters you might recognize as well. We also had this opportunity for our inclusion students to participate in this activity as well. So students having hands-on learning experience and being able to access this activity with our general classroom students. So there were persons of this that were accessible to any student, and this is just, you know, the students in this kindergarten classroom, they were so excited to see this. And after, you know, a couple of weeks after this has been implemented, now the kindergartners have their hands on it. They were so motivated by seeing their older peers do this for them, that they were ready to get in there themselves. So I know it looks like a lot of fun, and it certainly is a lot of fun, but it's not all fun and games. We are working towards those profile of the graduate attributes. So we selected four, it really could meet any one of the profile of the graduate attributes, but these are four that were selected. And this is, this is just a couple of the ways that they show that they are meeting those standards. The students had to communicate, they had to work with a partner. If they could work with their partner, they would be successful. They also had to get feedback, which people tried to, those of you who are parents, giving feedback doesn't always go over so well, but we're, we're working on giving feedback and accepting feedback as part of our portrait of a graduate, profile of a graduate work with students. They had to do some critical thinking and problem solving, and they definitely, definitely, definitely had to have perseverance, because it doesn't always go right the first time. So that ability to say, hey, I didn't do it right the first time, but I can get back up and do it again. So where do we go, where do we go from here? So we introduce our V-Box to our littlest learners. We are, we are trying to create a continuum of learning with our robotics program. We are being more intentional about the planning of coding and the actual application and using the robots as an integrated part of the curriculum rather than a standalone. And I did mention that last time we spoke. These are just a sampler of some of the smaller robotics collections that we do have in the district. Our upper right-hand corner is Lego's newest iteration, Spike Prime. We do have a couple classrooms that are using these across the district. They're excellent. Lego is setting the Lego Mindstorms, which is what our largest collection is. We'll use that until the platform is no longer compatible with district, the district can no longer support it, the platform won't work anymore. We'll use those until we can't use them anymore, and then we will try to see where we can go from there. But hopefully our students, what we know our students, will be more successful, more capable by the time we're ready to introduce Spike to them. So we do, like I said, we do have one classroom, a middle school classroom that is using Spike Prime. We are using Edison Robots and Lego Mindstorms as well at the middle school. And then at the high school, we do have some Lego Mindstorms, which are the DVD robots, they're really cool. And then we have Spike Prime that's being used in our problem-solving course, which I think you've heard about as well. It's very highly engaging for students. And then there is a NAF course that works on robotics, and they use our Dino boards, which they're just, they're little microprocessors that you can take input and have output. So if you make a sensor go off, then a light will go on, or if you touch something...
And can I just say, NAF stands for National Academy Foundation?
Yes.
That's what we use for our academies at the high school, the national model.
So it becomes a little less concrete at the, at the upper levels, and that's what we want. These, super concrete.
Can you say that again, what was that, the middle school levels?
At the middle school, we have 83 Mindstorms. We have one set of Spikes, and then we have the Edison Robot. The Edison Robots are primarily used in the IT classes in middle school.
Okay, so what middle school is that?
The Spikes. D'Lo Reto has a classroom set of Spikes because they were not included in the original order, and so knowing that Mindstorms are on their way out, they repurchased the most current.
So is it available at Slade and Pulaski, or it's...
So the Spikes are not available right now at Slade and Pulaski, they have Mindstorms. They have, we have about 100 Mindstorms at each of Slade and Pulaski, we have 23 Spikes at D'Lo Reto.
Gotcha.
Yep, and the Mindstorms, the Mindstorms are fantastic. Spike is a little brighter, it's a little, the colors are a little brighter, the color scheme's different. Mindstorms are a little more industrial, okay? But they still do, they do a lot of things, they have sensors, the students can still, it's the same program and platform. All right, so now, we wanna invite you to experience our inquiry with our V-Box. So we would flip the V-Box over, you're welcome to turn it on, you should hear it. And alongside you should have been passed out a small card, which gives you the basic instructions for coding your V-Box.
We didn't get that.
We didn't get that.
On the part of that school.
Oh, on the page. Yeah, yeah, so there's another one, this shows you the arrow. So just take a minute and just put all the buttons. So if you imagine yourself as a student in the district using one of these for the first time, you have to play here, we told you not to do it. Don't you go with it. We actually give them very little direction at first, when we first introduce them, so that they would participate in that inquiry experience of just sort of trying to figure it out, see where the V-Box would go based on their commands. And it's directly related to our lesson in unit themes. We were specifically teaching patterns and communication for this past unit, and this was an opportunity for them to do that through promotion. So they're trying to cycle through an algorithm and a sequence of commands in order to get their V-Box where they wanted it to go. As you can see, it's not always intuitive, it takes a few tries to figure it out. All right, so you can see that you have a lot of cool stuff.
I cannot believe the prices, I looked it up on Amazon, $98 for this.
I was just gonna say, give off the Google, Mr. Kane, I knew it, I knew it.
624 sets, $900, maybe $8 each.
I know.
So, yes.
I can't read the instructions.
This is why, this is why we're, you can read it every time, this is why we're not using another standalone anymore, and that's part of our integrated curriculum. Because the more use they get, the more practice they just get. And believe it or not, these are fantastic alone. We use these cards to code students. We have previous programs themselves, so like, okay, code your friends from the, from the, from the door, from the classroom door, to your locker. And they have to keep their needs, code the instructions. Then we ask them to do it with the robot. So we go from really concrete to a little more abstract. So now you are gonna actually code your robot. I wanna make sure that you do know that when you put, when you put the commands in, if you accidentally don't do it correctly, you need to start again. You do need to press the clear button to clear all the code out, otherwise your new commands will just add on to your ones. So I'm gonna give you a little practice sheet, and you can practice coding your robot. And when you're ready, you can bring that robot up here, and you can practice on the big mat. And I'm gonna put the, I'm gonna put the triangles and the squares up here. So when you think you've got it, come up and test it. And you know, if you don't get it right, what are you gonna do? Go back and try it again. That's right. And if you wanna work with a partner, you can, or you can choose to work by yourself. This will be true with our class, we give choice. You wanna make sure that you are comfortable, you feel like fair enough.
Thinking about it.
I'm gonna give you a template, you can write on this.
I had a very similar type of problem with this in sixth grade.
So just take a few minutes and see if you can...
Hold him around the house with it. I think Attorney Murphy wants to try it too. Come on, Matt. No, Mr. Moreno?
I'm good, he's good watching.
All right.
So you will notice that these are chunky and round to the grain. They might not always go in a exactly straight line, so how will you count it in the program that you're writing?
I'm just gonna pretend it's mine. I'll take mine after. You did the sneaky idea, it's gonna pop. I went in a circle though. Let's see, if we just do it back. You don't have to start down? Yeah. And try it again. But you didn't follow the arrows. I don't care. No, definitely, that's right. Yeah, but I suppose you're supposed to follow the arrows.
So believe it or not, this, this activity, how does it, how does it scale up? What comes next? Well, at the middle school, we're teaching them how to go, how to manage their needs.
We'll never go on, are you as smart as a... He just circled after four, he got tired. He didn't wanna do it anymore.
I need to send my wife my Christmas list now.
How much did you send these, John?
$98 on Amazon, each. Oh, you're gonna buy me one, thank you, Sarah.
So if you're wondering about any sort of cross-curricular connection, math, okay? We're measuring. We are counting. You can even count angles, you can do that. If you're talking about literacy, we've done story retail using these maps, putting story elements underneath and having the students code from beginning, middle to end, solving problems. Doing like a quiz show, putting their responses underneath, the students have to code their way to the right response. Music, there's a dance, you can code the V-Box to dance, you can tell the students how to program the V-Box, and they hit go at the same time, and it's adorable. They, they will, you know, and you can see if the students are able to follow the directions. It has lots of directionality, which is really important at the younger grades.
I feel so bad.
Now, I wanna say too, like I said, it's our curriculum meeting, that I've saw probably every school in the state, and I've seen probably every STEAM program out there. Most of the STEAM programs are nothing more than glorified art classes. You come to the Brim and stuff like this, problem solving, creativity. So I do think we have a super great STEAM program.
So thank you, thank you for saying that, and I do appreciate it. And, you know, we are, we are in the beginning stages of what we hope to be creating a robust robotics program, so we can feed it to the high school, so we can be, sort of be competitive in the state, which is ultimately what we want. And this is accessible, like we said, this is accessible to all learners in the district. We're making sure that all of our learners have the opportunity to be hands-on with our robotics. But thank you for being really good sports today and participating. And V-Box go a little mucky sometimes, they go a little bit to the left or to the right.
That must have been my problem.
I do appreciate it, and I hope you had a little bit of fun tonight. And just so you know, if you get to know, you can stop by any of our schools, even if it's not your liaison school, we'd love to show you what we're doing. Come on into the classroom and see what our students are doing, because they are proud, and they are looking to demonstrate what they can do for real audiences, and that means you. Yes, thank you.
Are you planning to do a invention convention again?
So invention convention is being, is being kind of moved into one of the new units. We decided to not do a full invention convention this year, as we are getting back into the kind of structured learning that we had a couple of years ago. So it's not off the table, but we're definitely, definitely a consideration.
They were fun.
It was, it was fun. It's a, it's a big challenge at the elementary school with the amount of time that's between classes and where to store the projects. So if we can figure out some of that logistically, it might end up being part of our enrichment series, but definitely, definitely in the cards. We're doing a lot of the invention convention type thinking, actually in the current unit that we're doing called Innovation and Exploration. So the kids are having fun, they're making all kinds of iterations of crayons and what you can do with a water bottle, it's pretty, it's pretty great.
Oh, very cool, thank you.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
I still have the tongue depressor catapult dead in me.
So the house has a robotics floor. And then once we start putting in the organ, and kind of include some of the Spikes to kind of replace the Mindstorms, then they'll be on, they'll be on that one.
Okay, and then we thought to do something as far as, as far as the club works, should fly?
Yes, yep, yeah. I think we're gonna try to get you in our bubble, the kids have a strong foundation on the floor.
Okay, all right.
The first thing the kids say, can we keep them? Like, I wish, guys, I wish.
It's fighting the, this means fighting. It's getting them into, hopefully, maybe they'll get into a program.
That was fun. That doesn't hear me going on. Well, I was just gonna say that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next item on the agenda is committee reports. Policy, we just, we didn't...
Oh, we've been on it for one, you know, minutes.
I know, well, you ran it the other day, but we didn't have any...
We only have, we have one whole business coming before.
Right. Curriculum, I don't think they've met in quite some time.
Well, they, they did, they gave the overview.
Well, they did do the overview, yes. But there's nothing new for it. Finance facilities, we definitely have a lot, the majority of it is on the consent agenda, but obviously, and questions. Does anybody have any board reports? No, I was just gonna say, I did not get a chance to attend the magical feast, but I hear it was phenomenal. I mean, it's a new way of, of doing things.
Hopefully not a new one forever.
I know, I know, I did not.
No. Yeah, no, Mike and I were there Friday night. It was really nice, they did a really good job. The food was amazing, I have to say. Maybe I was so starved at night, it was a nightmare.
But it's different though, it's done by our students.
Our students.
Yeah, it's different, we don't have the pre-coating work.
Yeah, our chef Nelson and his team and our, our kids in culinary.
Yeah, culinary students have to stay for five hours after school.
Yes, yep. And they were there, handing out the meals of the... And they were there handing out the meals of the one, two.
And for me, I'm usually number one sports stalker, but I know, like, we had Junior Keynes going down to Delaware. I don't recall what their records were, but we have our New Britain Raiders down in Florida, competing tomorrow, I believe, for like nationals. I think they have two or three squads. Three. So, and the majority are our students, so that's.
As a request, though, I know that the leagues are starting to form for winter sport basketball and stuff. If we can get a copy of the schedule emailed to us, we could attend, especially, I live right next to New Bren High. I'll drop in a few games once in a while.
Yeah, absolutely, 'cause I actually have them linked to my phone.
We can get those from Dave and Lisa, and we can just send out. And sometimes it changes, folks. That's the only hard part, because of weather, weather or whatever. Sometimes they are canceled when they get there. That's how.
Right. 'Cause I can send you the link to like the C I A C link, 'cause it will update on your phone usually. Instead of the paper, 'cause you might show up, like, drive all the way to E O Smith on Monday. And, so, all right.
Well, I do know they're playing my school on January 8th.
Home or away?
Um, well, home from New Bren High.
So, old business, policy. Do I have, am I gonna read it?
Yes.
So do I have a motion to approve policy? Item A, policy committee moves to approve revised policy 5131.00, student discipline code. Have a second?
Second.
Anybody up for discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No re-raise. All she cares. Next item is the consent agenda. Is there anything anybody wishes to take off the consent agenda?
Madam President, I'd like to remove items F, G, H from the consent agenda.
F, G, and H?
Yes. What is question?
Is there anything else?
I'd like to remove item S.
S as in Sam? Anything else? All right, item F.
Um, we can probably include item F, G, and H together. My concern.
So, can I have a motion to approve item? Can we do F, G, and H together?
I think once you're taking off the consent agenda, you can do each.
We should do individually, okay. Can I have a motion to approve item F? Approve new position request for one F T E, Dean of Students at Bridges Program at N B H S.
Is there a motion to remove?
No, a motion to approve.
Some.
Is there a second?
Second.
My concern on these positions is that here we are approving tonight, but they've been posted for over a month out there at C T Reed. And my concern was, why are we posting position that hasn't been approved yet? Allowing people to apply. I mean, I know these positions are important. I do support these positions. I'm just concerned if the board state decided to vote no, you have all these applicants who wasted their time applying for position. I'd rather we start putting out the postings after board approval.
Right, is it Ms. Manning?
Yeah.
Would you be able to answer why, like, when we have, something comes to personnel, we posted it before we had actual approval?
Sure, absolutely. So part of the reason for, for posting, and the posting should specify anticipated, because when we post anticipated, that lets the public know for those who are in need of applying that there is cause for it to perhaps not be approved at that point. So it allows us to start to vet candidates. So that once it is approved, we are that much closer to beginning the process to vetting candidates. We certainly don't wanna mislead the public with something that is approved. So be near to the word anticipated. That was helpful to us also. And we need to be, the S are positions as well. So, so that is why we post them prior to.
Yeah, I'm looking right here at C T Reed website. There's no mention about anticipating on there.
That was perhaps an error in our department. They have the directive to put anticipated if it's not approved by network. So we'll make sure that we.
Yeah, I'm looking for.
That we do forward, so those should be anticipated by that point.
Thank you for that explanation.
I'm just checking the website itself here. Does that fall under certified administration? On the board website?
No. Not certified.
They're not certified.
Right, they would not be certified. So going forward, before they, would we need to post like that? Will we be sure that they say anticipated? That would be much appreciated.
Yeah, it doesn't say that on the website, the board's website either.
Right, so, future. Thank you so much for that. So item F, we have a motion to approve and a seconded motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, item G. Have a motion to approve new position request for one F T E, Dean of Students for Bridges Program at Slade Middle School. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion, or the discussion stands?
Yeah, makes a suggestion for all three of those, they're the same.
So all those in favor of item G? Signify by saying aye, thank you. Oh, item H.
Motion to approve item H.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I, I thought Mr. Pierce was gonna bring some data with him regarding these positions.
It's in the packet. Do you want him to present?
Yeah, of course, absolutely.
Oh, okay, perfect. Mr. Pierce, you are on. So do I need to pull that, that vote back? Okay, perfect. All right. You're not a legal guy today, Mr. Pierce. Miss, Miss Mike will not engage. He's gonna rejoin.
Mike, if you wanted to just start reviewing it, that would be fine. If you can get the packet from Preston.
Tony, page sixty, say what?
Page sixty is where the young questions are.
If Damon comes on, then we can jump. He can run and jump, I'm afraid.
He's back.
Oh, oops. If Mike's working. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I'm trying to look through. I did provide Kristen.
On page sixty, Damon?
With the summary of the associate principal job responsibilities and the dean of students' job responsibilities.
We have it.
They have it, Damon.
Okay. So a lot of the concerns that we have at the high school is that just finding time to address all the needs we have here at the high school this year. And before we begin, if I could, I'd like to take a very deliberate step, throw in a little bit of an editorial comment. Some of the things I'm about to describe in terms of behaviors may be shocking, or the, or the intensity of the behavior could be shocking or alarming. And I really just wanna be super perfectly clear. At the end of the first quarter, 1,537 of our students had absolutely no referrals. That's a greater number than many of the high schools in the state of Connecticut. You throw in students who have perhaps only one or two referrals, you know, really just being adolescents to some degree. The total is that about eighty-four percent of our students are doing just fine. And I really wanna make sure that we keep that in perspective. The students here at New Britain High School by March are doing what they need to do. They're plugged into the school, and they're doing great things. What we are encountering this year, however, is a smaller portion of the student population are presenting with significant behaviors and significant needs that are making it very difficult for us to appropriately attend to them. And so I, I included those job descriptions there for you to, to appreciate the scope of responsibility that both the associate principals and, and the deans are having while trying to engage in their other job responsibilities. And I did find some other data after I submitted this that I think will help demonstrate to you just how difficult the time that we're having here. One of the important functions that associate principals have is in the supervision of teachers. And we each have a caseload anywhere between, well, probably average about twenty-seven staff members. And our ability to get into classrooms has been, is significantly challenged this year. In twenty nineteen, twenty, that, the school year, we averaged twenty-nine, twenty-eight point seven classroom observations a month between the administrative team. The following year, last year, even though it was an asynchronous year, we still engaged in those classroom observations, and we averaged twenty-six a month. This year, we're, we're averaging twelve classroom observations a month. That's over a fifty percent reduction. That, to me, is, is super significant, given that one of our primary responsibilities in the admin team is instructional leadership. And please bear in mind that average of, of twelve is with the addition of a supervisor for special education in the Bridges Program, and our athletic director now also participates and conducts some, some classroom observations and supervises some staff members. So clearly, we're having a very challenging time getting into the classrooms and providing that support and that guidance for teachers. And, and, and I, and I think I described in the memo how anywhere between forty to sixty percent of the administrative's time is taken up by these school-wide days of responsibility, either the on-call days or, or maintaining a presence in the hall scan. Similarly, the deans are also having a difficult time getting into the classrooms. I actually met with our L M M committee, Labor Management. It's the eight seventy-one presentation. And they came prepared with a little bit of data mining they had done themselves, and I think it really illustrates the challenge that we're beginning to face. One of the members presented me with a, a list of, a series of students who had a number of referrals entered into the three sixty platform that we use here at the high school. And there are some alarming number of students who haven't received any consequences, but the deans just haven't had time to, to reach out and address those students. There are one, two, three, four students on this list that had eleven referrals and had not received a single consequence for those actions. And that, to me, is very, very alarming. The last thing you want to have is an atmosphere where T, where students perceive that they're able to engage in acts of misconduct without any attention whatsoever from the dean or an administrator. So just as an example of the challenge the deans are experiencing with their obligations to school-wide responsibilities. One other area that also has impacted us is that we have been without our I S S monitor for the last two and a half weeks now. And we really don't have anybody available in the building who could fill in that role. We certainly can't rotate deans or administrators in that position right now as they're simply stretched thin already. And so, as a result, unfortunately, the high school has not had the availability of in-school suspension as a consequence for students, as I said, for two and a half weeks. So, I mean, I can, I'm gonna take a pause there to see if there are any questions.
Mr. Kane with a C.
Yes. I have to be honest, I am not happy with these, where these positions were written out, these requests. I compare it with some of the other requests, and I see a lot more data. One of the issues that came up at our meeting last week is we wanna see more data. You know, you, you do, you make a very good case, Mr. Pierce, of a reason why it's necessary, but you're not giving a good reasoning of what, what you hope these positions will accomplish other than pretty much saying you got a problem. How is this position gonna solve a problem? How, you know, how, we want to see numbers. How many, adding these two deans on here, how much is that gonna reduce the caseload of everybody? How is it gonna improve behavior? How's it gonna lower referrals? I look at the information that another principal submitted for his, and he's got a lot more data in there. And that was something we were looking for in this one too, is not, very little data. So I'm asking you to explain, what kind of hard numbers can you give us about us spending a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is gonna affect and improve behavior?
Well, I can give you some examples right now. The, the, the deans, they're, they're spending their time, for example, in the hall scans. And, and the, and the purpose behind those hall scan responsibilities is to provide the time for either a dean or administrator to truly interact with the students, trying to identify what the concerns are, what are the behaviors, why they're, they're engaging in this out-of-class behavior. And we do have some indication of the effectiveness of those positions as soon as I can pull that up right here. And I believe we, I referenced this last time. I'm sorry, I'm having tab issues here. So we've had a, a total of eight hundred and sixty-five incidents of students participating or, or being brought into those hall, hall scans. Each one of those is being addressed by a dean or an administrator who happens to be there. And, and what we're seeing through the implementation of those is that a reduction of, of repeat students coming back there. So, for example, out of the total students that have been in there, there's only ninety-five who have been brought in back, have been brought in back, excuse that English, who have been, have returned for a second time into the hall scans. And then we've had a total of twenty-three that have come back for a third or a fourth visit. And so we are seeing a significant improvement in, in, in the behaviors of students. However, the, the students that are still engaging in those types of behaviors are, are, are going to require more purposeful intervention in order to support them making better choices. One research-based method that, that shows considerable promise is having some, a form of a check-in, check-out accountability, where the student establishes goals for themselves, and then there's somebody available every day to check in with them at the beginning of the school day, and then at the end of the school day. Having these two additional deans present would enable the, the other deans to be able to engage in those behaviors and, and put that effective intervention in place to help monitor and support those students that are still having persistent challenges in, in getting into class. So as, as one example, that's what I would offer right here. Those are interventions that are being, were being supported through our collaboration with Engaging Schools. And so they provide us with a framework for these interventions, which we then implement. They provide us with the training for the students to engage in those interventions.
Okay, thank you for that. So I have two, two parts. Tina, you wanted the numbers. I know you had eight hundred and sixty-five students addressed by the deans. Can you just rattle off those four?
Those are the people that were caught in the hall scans. But what was the timeframe for that eight sixty-five? Like, is that through November one, December one?
That's, that's dated through November.
End of November?
Are these the same numbers that we had at P T O?
Uh, no, these were run today. So the P T O data didn't wrap up all of November. They had most of.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, but on P T O day, what we were really talking about was that they only have one guy to do the in-school suspension. So you really can't count that as a consequence because, and I have trouble wrapping my head around one person, but one person. Okay, so through end of November, through beginning of December? Through when? We got eight.
End of November.
Okay. End of November, you've got eight sixty-five. You brought it down to ninety-five. And then what's that third number?
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, thank you.
Now.
Of the third, there are three, uh, three peats. Not just twenty-three, but twenty-three of them were three-peters instead of repeaters.
No, 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 I got the three-peter, but I'm saying if you go from eight sixty-five down to ninety-five, down to twenty-three.
That's the second, the second.
Second and third offenders, right?
I got that offense.
Are we hearing you correctly? So.
That is, that is correct. However, and, and I, I cannot, I'm sorry, due to the nature of what I'm about to tell you, I can't give you exact numbers, but I believe that that twenty-three is, is underrepresented of the students who are engaged in those repeated behaviors. And that is because when they see me coming now, they run. And so it's, it's proving, it's proving challenging to, to actually engage those students and bring them out and continue the process. So that's why it's really important to have additional staff members here who have the time to be able to find those students when they come in first thing in the morning, reconnect those students to their goals, check in with them at the end of the day to see how they did, and plan for a better day the next day if necessary.
All right, I got, so Ms. Parker.
Okay. Damon, what I wanted you to explain, because maybe.
Damon, what I wanted you to explain, because maybe some people don't know, explain what a scan is. What are you talking about? What are you actually doing?
All right, so the hall scans are, is one of the interventions actually that we planned to set up for this year, where students who are found in the hallway without a pass or their pass is old and expired, are brought down to a dedicated space in the high school in which they meet with either a dean or an associate principal. And depending on the frequency of the student, depends on the outcome and the consequence. If it's a first-time student, they really take the time to look into the needs that the students may have. For example, we found out at the beginning of the year, a lot of our students actually were apprehensive about attending the cafeteria. It's a large space, still in this pandemic era. So it was trying, it was, once we heard that, it's like, okay, we need to create another space at lunchtime for these students to attend to. So we opened up the media center, and indeed, there are still some students who go to the hall scan if they need a quieter space to go during the lunch period. So it's really taking the time to look in and understand what issues are driving the students to engage in that behavior.
Can I ask you one more question? Can I ask one more question? Because I think I understand like the quizzical look at, because I even have it. In November, you had 865 referrals.
That's right.
Of those 865, 95 were repeaters, 23 were three-peters. So there's still 865 referrals in one month. They didn't bring down the number.
I'm sorry, the number was September, that, that.
That's September 2, November.
Beginning of the school year.
Okay.
That's why I asked if it was a cumulative number. So were you pulling that number from, that's why I wanted it like. When it was asked for, that's what it was supposed to be, where like all the information was over here, not this, that looks like a cover sheet to your resume.
Mr. Kane.
Can I ask two questions? First question, month-to-month, September, October, November, do you have that breakdown, please?
I do. Why don't I do this?
Present your screen.
Yes.
Wonderful.
Can you see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, perfect.
All right. So here's the month breakdown that you just requested. Here's the A65 here, we've broken it down by cohort. But what's critical to note about September is that's really only a week, right? Because we had that, that day where we closed so that we could, we went remote so we could plan and put this, put this intervention into place. So those 307 incidents in September, it was really busy. And so that's where we captured. So it actually is a significant drop, because then you look at October, it's 392, but that's for the entire month of October. And then this is the entire month of November.
166. So it actually dropped off in November significantly.
Yes, yep. So there is a significant drop now. And then if you can, here you can see it by cohort. And so clearly, the behaviors are concentrated in the freshman and sophomore classes.
So if you trend it, December, January.
By the repeaters.
Yep.
And again, I will come back to this point. And this is a source of frustration for me, is that the students now aware of the intervention and aware of the possible consequences that are coming, they're now running from the So I, and I say that now only that I would believe that this number will actually be higher, which is again, another reason why I believe that it's important that we have additional resources here so that we can work with these students more individually. Because the more intense the behaviors, the more intense the needs that the students are going to have until we can support them into a journey of better, a more successful journey here at the high school.
All right, Mr. Kane, you had one more.
The second part of my question is, the, in the packet, you referenced the added concern 2021, 22, and you say, quote, "We have not experienced dramatic shift in percentage of behaviors this time. The intensity of behaviors needs exhibited by unusual students have increased, have dramatically That's not taking into account, obviously, all of these runners, that data that you're referencing. Is that the concern, the fact that, I mean, the difference now, this year, 2021, 22 versus 2018, 19? The need for these two additional deans, that we have so many kids in the hallways that we're not even able to find because they're running them?
Yes, and it's not just, those are not the only student behaviors that are providing significant concern. The students who have been impacted by the pandemic, that remaining 15%, it's very, very significant. We had one case this morning, for example, where one student was requiring the attention of two administrators, one of them for half the day. So they're very, and I can't get more specific than that, because in a public meeting, I don't want to review, you know, reveal any private or confidential information about students. But when we have cases where DCF is involved, where we have cases that require thorough and extensive investigations, that just takes up a lot of time, particularly of the administrators and then supported by the deans. And so, it's hard to capture those incidents, those numbers in data, because it is still, it's right now, 15% of the student population. But the level and the intensity and the time required to resolve those behaviors are just taking a tremendous amount of time on behalf of the existing student.
Ms. Santana.
She was. No, he was actually ahead of me.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Okay. I've seen firsthand, Mr. Pierce, that this, this works, hall sweeps work. The reason we ask for numbers is there's a trend you're obviously going, where it's going down every month. I mean, just based on extrapolation, I can almost predict it, maybe almost 100 incidences by December, and it's going down. But the thing about this composition, the hall sweeps to be effective, you need to be consistent. That's why I can understand the need, because you need to do this every day, every period, in order for students to figure out what periods they can get away with, what word's going to get out, oh, well, you're too busy today to do a sweep, we can't, so you need to do this consistently. But the numbers that we ask for is, by us adding these two people, what is your projection of how effective it's going to be? Is it going to increase the dropping? And then, what's going to happen once you've reached single digits for incidences for the month? What's going to happen to these extra deans? Are they going to be repurposed for other duties? Are they going to start working on family intervention, maybe, building relationships? What are you going to do with them once they, the need for the hall sweeps won't be as prevalent, or the kids are starting to get?
So there's, it's two answers to that. The next area that we really need to address in terms of culture in the building is prompt arrival to class. A growing issue that we're experiencing here is parting with to class. And so, once we have made significant inroads on students getting to class, the next thing we need to address is students' timely arrival to class. I actually had a conversation today on how we're going to use our existing staff to begin to address that matter. But getting back to projections, I would, it's still early in the year. And so right now, there's about, about 15% of the student body that is actually responsible for 80.9% of all referrals in the building. Typically, what happens over the course of the year, as, that that 15% would actually build out to, I would expect it to end by the end of the year, at about 20 to 22% of the students. And I can say that because that's pretty much been the trend since I've been principal. And also, as some of you may know, I worked here as an associate principal for nine years, and that was, you know, down in the freshman academy itself, and that was always the trend. So I would expect the number of students typically engaged in these behaviors to creep up if past patterns were come true. So having the additional staff members and the additional deans to help address that and to keep that consistent environment, because I couldn't see who made the comment, which you are 100% correct, is that students will quickly perceive if there's any releasing of the pressure on the expectation that students go to class. So we need them to keep reinforcing that culture and then to really start focusing in on the timely arrival to class. Additionally, and I don't know if any of you have been here, quite honestly, the last period of the day is always a challenge here. I know that there's many of you in the building over there right now who have witnessed this. And so students, in the warmer weather, they typically, unfortunately, many of them leave the building at the end of the day. And so, those students in the colder weather months tend to remain in the building a little bit more during that last period of the day. And so I would expect to see an uptick in students engaged in the hall scan process at the end of the day. So for those two reasons alone, I think the additional staff members, in terms of deans, are certainly warranted.
Mr. Marino.
Yeah, I just had a follow-up, because I know it was referenced earlier, the PTO numbers. So what I found interesting was only 4% of all your referrals were involving insubordination or anything serious of nature. And I'm curious as to what that is, and if this is a, you know, the old-school skipping class, how long an intervention lasts when dealing with a kid when they're skipping class? Because to me, all it says is that their goal is to get out of class, and we're almost furthering them to achieving that goal by pulling them in and having them sit down. I'm not, you know, I asked last time if there was any possible way to come up with an alternative. You said you couldn't. I'm not sure. I know the grant is intended to address behavioral issues or those related to COVID. And I would almost explore potentially compensating all the hard work that the associates and the deans have done with maybe altering the approach slightly and borderline, and it maybe sounds harsher and appropriate, but inconveniencing the kids after school to hold these interventions. And then compensating the staff for doing so.
That's what we do.
So like after-school detention?
Mm-hmm, and it works.
And still a one-on-one session?
It works.
So we can't mandate that students remain after school. If that, if I understand your inquiry correctly, is that we can't mandate school students stay past the end of the school day? So we already actually assigned two-hour detentions to students who are caught in the hall scans. And so that's already there. And that, I would, I would say, is enough to deter those students that are perhaps riding on the cusp on the edge of considering additional class cuts. So after-school detentions are already in the rapid clock that we use in terms of the consequence, if that's what you were referring to.
And what's, what does an after-school detention then entail? That's what I'm.
So it's a traditional detention after school. It's actually an hour and a half long. They're assigned and, by the deans and the associate principals, and they're on two days a week.
Wouldn't it be possible to then adjust the system to host them almost every day if you're compensating the deans and the associate principals to stay after and then hold their interventions rather than an average sit-in-the-classroom detention?
They don't sit in the, they don't sit in the intervention room for the entire class period. The intervention is actually the conversation where the associate principal or the dean looks into the student background and provides the appropriate plan forward. And so if you've got somebody who comes down once again, we have it so that they actually have a contract and the parents are contacted and informed of the situation and made aware that there are additional consequences for students who continue to engage in this behavior. But it's also about providing support. But typically, the student only sits down at that intervention for about 10 minutes and then are sent back to class.
So, we do have a motion on the table to approve the two FTE dean students, dean of students at the Breton High School. I'm actually going to put this one to a vote. Do we feel like we've had all our questions answered?
Mr. Marino, I'd probably go all night with.
I figured that, but I do, I bet you, I think Mr. Pierce is a data guy, he'd probably entertain conversations. I don't know that, I don't want to put him up for that, but.
I will say, if I say one more comment, Mr. Mayor, I do see a need firsthand for this position. I mean, and I do agree with you, I live, I'm your next-door neighbor. I could tell when it's really warmer, when suddenly I can look out my window at 1:00 in the afternoon, I'll see kids walking by. And when it's cold, I don't see it. So I agree with you with what's going on. But I can just say, I will vote yes for this, because I see a need. But when positions are coming before us in the future, we need more data about justifying it. Because if you go to the corporate world, they're going to ask to see numbers. They're going to want to say, okay, you're spending this money, what are you going to get out of it?
All right, break down with you, Mr. Kane. Okay. So, all those in favor of the two FTE deans at MBHS signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those not in favor? Anybody abstaining?
All right. Well, I'm not in favor of it, but is that, I mean, I can.
According to Robert's rules, you have to give a justified reason why you're abstaining, so.
We don't typically ask for a reason. If you would like to abstain, you can abstain.
That's right. Let's just say no.
Yeah, or you just say no.
No, 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 that's okay. Don't just say no. That's okay. No, no, it's fine.
Okay. So motion carries. And then we also, thank you, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
S. Item S. Can I have a motion for item S?
The purchasing coordinator of the movement program provided by community interest organizations.
Discussion.
Yes, I'd just like to abstain from this vote, because my organization contracts the discussion of this.
Thank you for that. Any other discussion?
You might want to leave the room.
Is there a discussion? No?
Well, the only thing is, under city ethics, it's always recommended if you have a possible personal interest, it's always better to leave the room during the vote, just in case, not to give any.
If you have a preference.
That was recorded in the minutes that you were in there, just in case.
If you have a preference to leave the room while we vote? I don't, I don't think we've ever done that, but I mean. Yeah, it's noted in the minute. We could do a roll call vote? We'll do a roll call vote, if you don't mind, for item S. Unless there, is there further discussion on this one? All right, so we'll do a roll call.
Mr. Kane with a C.
Yes.
Ms. Dawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Kane?
Yes.
Mr. Listrow?
Abstain.
Mr. Marino?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Reyes?
Yes.
Ms. Santana?
Yes.
Mr. Gay?
Yes.
Ms. Sanders-Palau?
Yes.
All right. So that was all of the items removed from the consent agenda. All other items move forward. So new business.
Motion to approve the board of education meeting calendar?
Second.
Any discussion? Anybody see anything on it?
What page?
It was on 193, all the way to about. Keep scrolling, just keep scrolling. Any discussion of this one, changes? Perfect. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So item B.
Move to adopt the grievance calendar?
That's on page 196. Any discussion? Anybody want to review? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Oh my goodness, does this mean I can't motion to adjourn because I'm chair? because I'm chair? Oh.
Move to adjourn.
Other business as permitted?
Oh, other business as permitted by law.
Yes. I would want to make a motion that we discussed about the open meetings, the public meeting, having the meeting, the public involved in the meetings again. My understanding was, well, do you have to vote?
Yeah, I was going to say, we have to vote to bring onto the agenda discussion about open meetings to the public. Everybody in favor of doing so signify by saying aye? Oh, second, sorry.
Second.
So, everybody signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. Um, I was asked if I was interested in doing it. And my objection was that I spent all of this time cooperating and making sure I didn't get COVID. I do not want to be in a public meeting with people who I don't know if they're vaccinated. I don't know if they're going to wear a mask or not. So, I thought it was a question that we would decide. I didn't know it was going to be decided for us. So, am I correct in thinking those letters I saw is saying that we are going to be doing this?
So, I did make a recommendation that possibly the next policy committee meeting, they come up with a policy that truly fits in, like if written numbers go up to eight, nine percent or a number that we close public participation and the masks, right? Because our policy is not necessarily, it doesn't really include the gates building, right? And we did have some conversations back in committee that we made comments about our masks and how we felt. So, I'm here, I wear mine because I am vaccinated, but I don't know anybody here has it, not even if they're vaccinated. But if they have it, I don't want to bring it to my mother's facility. So, I am definitely with you. But I did, we did say that we would maybe bring it to a policy committee meeting and develop the policy based on numbers. Mr. Kane with a C.
I did some research on how other districts are doing it. What they're doing is they're actually moving out of their central office for their meetings. For example, Hartford has it at Weaver. Social distance, one to two spaces between. We have the largest high school in the state. We have huge auditorium there. I think it easily, social distance in there. I don't know what staffing policies and overtime stuff having it at the school. We have so many auditoriums that maybe better social distance there and have it at one of the schools instead.
Right, we used to do it at the lecture hall. Keep in mind, that is a school building and masks are required.
I don't have a problem with answering the meeting. It's more the public wants to attend. The public wants to see.
I definitely do not want it in a small building.
Right, and we did say for this meeting, we wouldn't have been able to get the lecture hall in time to do something like that. And then it's the setup. When during COVID, we, I don't know if you guys watched any of our meetings, we were all over and it was very difficult to hear, know if somebody was saying something, if they wanted to be noticed. So, I definitely think it should go to policy. I would love to refer this one to policy.
Even on a non-COVID, I mean, I can't see how it would fit the public and-
Well, that's basically, that's the room. We typically have more chairs in here, but not that much, not that many chairs.
No, we don't get them in the people.
But there have been times when we've had a hundred people in this room.
Yeah.
We had a hundred people with this much COVID. We've got a real chance of-
Yeah.
Right. And usually, if we think it's going to be a large crowd, we move and leave it anyway. And remember, we had over at our vax school when we thought we were getting a large crowd.
Yeah.
It's also more spread out than normal times. We usually don't have these extra tables.
Right, we're usually packed into this, the horseshoe right here. So, we're a little bit closer. So, even if I take my mask, I don't feel as bad because we're kind of far away. But usually, without, before COVID, we were all behind just the horseshoe, not the long table. So, I do hear you. I would love to refer this one to committee if everybody's in agreement with that. Perfect.
And just one more thing.
Yes.
That you're telling the teachers and the students and the parents they should wear masks. I think you should too. So, I'm noticing that some people have not had masks on. I'm very uncomfortable with that. So, if you could please follow the rule because while we ask that everyone else will do it, but we are not doing it. And I can see if you're eating and drinking, but I do, I don't drink, I'm a vet, but I do not, not to be a criminal with people who are not doing that. This is law and should be followed.
I appreciate that, Ms. Parker. I mean, I do, we do have part of that policy, maybe participation, masks, not masks, virtual, not virtual. Leave that to policy.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Wait up, seven-thirty.